Public comment, which is, we consider it very important to get public input. And, once that's completed, we close the, the public hearing portion of the meeting and reconvene in the back of the auditorium to finish our business. So with that, Mark, if you could read the first application.
First application, Robert Wolf of Wolf Architecture, 3 North Main, Honeybee Falls, New York, 14472. On behalf of Dr. Benjamin Peters and Dr. Justin Verone, request under Article 9-9-2 of the code for preliminary and final site plan approval for the construction of a 5,776 square foot optometry medical office located at 2142 Penfield Road on 0.46 acres. The property is now or formerly owned by Lillian Detweiler and his own BNR. Application number 14P-0017, SBL number 139.08-1-73.
Good afternoon. I'm Ed Summerhays. I'm going to start the presentation, although I'm, I'm here with Rob to fill in the blanks when I'm done, but just to briefly introduce this project. This is located on the north side of Penfield Road. As you know, it's a lot that, and I have on the screen, the existing conditions map on the screen over there. It's not on this map behind me, but it's 100 by 200 with an existing house and driveway access from Penfield Road. And it's bounded on the west by a building, which is a commercial building, and on the east by the Summit Federal Credit Union. The general grading is from the southeast corner to the northwest corner, and at the rear of the lot, is a drainage swale that's on the town park property that collects all the drainage from these lots that are fronting on Penfield Road. What we're proposing to do is to take that house out of there and construct a dentist office to, or I'm sorry.
Wrong one.
Maybe I put my glasses back on.
That was a month ago.
Okay, so, I am, actually, I was kind of surprised that I was going to be doing this introduction because Rob has this so organized, and with this demonstration with the, the computer and everything else, I said, I'm never going to be able to do another presentation here again. He's even given me a pointer here, and somewhere on here is this green line button for me to point to, but I won't count on it, or don't count on it. But anyway, so, we're going to put in the dentist office, the eye doctor, and with the parking, as, as per the town, the requirements or the request of the town, is, they want to eliminate the entrances along Penfield Road. So it's going to be access from the back, the parking will be from the back, and the patients will enter from the rear. But the front of the building, and, and it's very nicely shown here, oh no, that's the back image, the patients are going to be entering from the back. Now, we will need, because we, we also have to, we're required to have that private drive that's going to be going across the back, that's going to be entrance from Harris Whalen Park, everything gets moved forward. So we have to move the parking lot forward, we have to move the building forward, and a result of that, we're going to be asking for a variance for the front set back. And also, with their intention of what their clientele is now, and with growth and the size of the building that they really would prefer on this site, we've also had to expand the building over to the east, so we'll be asking for a variance on that site as well. The, for the size of the building, and the size of the lot, we don't have enough of parking spaces per code. However, there was a Monroe County study that Katie was involved with, and from that study, it, it, they realized that most medical buildings are asking, specifying too many parking spaces for the amount of patients there, and that based on the numbers from Monroe County's building, we require 21 for the size of this building. We are providing, we started out providing 21, but in order to provide the van accessible handicap spat, which is a very large one, we're actually losing one, so we're down to 20, but based on their current load, they won't, they're not going to be even utilizing that 20. So for drainage, I've got everything, the splash blocks are going to accept the, the roof runoff, and it's going to be conveyed via the yard swale around the front of the building, over to the southwest corner of the parking area, where there will be a catch basin provided near the southwest corner of the parking lot there, which will go into a storage system. So we have a storage system that's going to be, is, is sized to fit the drainage from the roof, as well as the drainage from the parking area, so that the stormwater runoff going off the site is going to be restricted, and, and actually, the, the storage unit that we have proposed, it also works as an infiltration trench, so it's going to sit in there as a storage, as well as, as an infiltrator, so that we're hopefully reducing or certainly not increasing the amount of storm runoff that's going to end up going Thus far, I've received comments from the, our PRC, and I don't know if you want me to go over those. We haven't received anything from Monroe County Planning, Conservation, or anything else.
If there's anything of note in that that you think is an issue with their comments, you might bring that up, but otherwise.
All right, I'll just quickly comment on notes one and two. Note one and two, note, number one, is requesting that the storm drainage, the outlets of the storage system that we have, and I don't know if you can zoom in on the northwest corner, it's in this area over here, but we have two outlets coming out of that storage chamber. One of them is a three-inch outlet that would restrict the flow to say, a two-year storm or something like that, and then the, an overflow above that. Right now, we have them going into the existing ditch out there, but one of the comments was to have those go into a structure, so we would construct them, a manhole there and have them go into the structure, which I actually kind of like that idea, because I think it, it protects those pipes, especially the three-inch pipe. People mowing lawns, whatever else, it can get destroyed, get knocked around. So I think having, putting a structure there as a collector point is a good thing, and we certainly agree with that. The one that I might take exception to would be going along the rear of the ditch to the west. We have a hundred-foot ditch, the town, that's on the town property there, and then that leads to a large outlet pipe going out to the street. It's an elliptical pipe that's two feet and three feet in size, and then coming from the park, there's another 12-inch pipe coming from the north. It's, it's a, it's a large expense to pipe this and regrade that all, not to mention a large expense to, to size a manhole that's going to fit those structures that are already there. And, and based on the philosophy that we really don't want to put any more strain on the downstream folk than we already do, I think it's a much better idea to leave that ditch open. It allows the storm water to actually settle in and infiltrate and utilize that ditch. It also slows down the amount of time it's going to take from storm water to reach the downstream side. And so I talked to Mark about this a little bit earlier, and I think he agreed with me. But we will put a, put a, like, one section, you know, a 10-foot section out of that, so it'll then go into the ditch, and we have the ditch. So, we would prefer not to pipe that ditch. I don't think it would be a good idea. And with that, I'll either open it up for questions or hand it over to Rob, whichever you prefer.
Why don't we let Rob do his new-fangled fly-through? This is a new thing for the town of Penfield, entering the 21st century. Second decade of the 21st century, how's that?
Well, thank you, Ed. It's, it's tough to follow Ed speaking, because I think he knows the, this town like the back of his hand, and he's a joy to work with. Yeah, let me just start out with the, with the animation. We like to produce these because they, a picture says a thousand words, and an animation says a lot more than that, and some of these landscaping elements aren't exactly the correct species, because our software doesn't have every individual genus of plant, but what we wanted to show was just kind of the overall size and location and type of plant, and, and really to show you what the sequence is like as you're coming into the building. And one of the interesting offshoots of a piece of software like this is we use it in the design phase. As we're moving around, we say, well, this isn't exactly what we want to see at this point in the design. I'll run it through again, just because it's, kind of goes quickly, but as that goes, I'll just talk about some of our design features. On the front of the building, we, we wanted to include kind of classical proportions on the center, and so really, the, the middle portion, pardon?
Pause it on the front?
Oh, okay, that's a good idea. Doctor suggests I pause it, and I think that's nice. Let me move it back. So here, it really goes back to a Greek temple with columns and voids in between, and so, even though it's a very modern building, we want to really base it on solid, well, well, well-used architectural principles. And the doctors also requested a lot of light coming into their area, and study upon study shows that learning and office enjoyment is really enhanced by natural light. And so, we wanted to bring it in there, and at the same time, we know that light can be a very destructive force, so I'm going to show you some studies we've done after, after we produced this model to look at the sun shading. And so when I talk about our sun shade design, on each one of our mullions out here, we've, we're playing around with the, the depth and thickness of those mullions, so that as the sun, as the sun goes up, especially in the summer, those mullions help to blot the sun as it's coming into the building, when we don't want the heat gain. And so, really, the, the party is very simple, just these large openings with this classically proportioned front, and then, this is a wooden gesture, kind of to signal an entry. There, there is a pedestrian entry here, although I think, we can all probably agree, it might be used one out of every 500 patients that come in here. It's there to kind of act as a visual entry, and that's, I think, a very important feature of what we're trying to do, is to make this, make this a building that reacts to the pedestrian, and also, the, the people driving by to be very inviting. So we've got a walk going right up to the front of the building, large openings, a lot of landscaping to soften it, and really to make it a welcoming building to come upon. I think these two animations also point out that wayfinding is an especially large concern with a, with a layout like this, because we not only have to signal this building to people coming down Penfield Road, but coming in the rear access portion of the building, and a confused motorist is a dangerous motorist. And so we want anybody coming to this project to know exactly where they're going and what to look for. And so that's why we, we are including one freestanding double-sided sign in the front, as well as a building-mounted sign, and then going along the back, we've got the same scenario. Much smaller, but the ones in the back are above and beyond what's allowed by the Town of Penfield code, and we're asking for a variance for that, primarily for safety, but also for wayfinding, for convenience of people trying to find their way here. And it is, most of the variances that we requested really are the result of the rear access easement. We've got a setback requirement, or variance that we're looking for, that Ed mentioned. However, on the east, we're asking for five feet of relief, we're asking for a 15-foot setback instead of a 20-foot setback. We feel that that positions the building correctly in the site, and it's right adjacent to a drive-thru. So, we feel that that's an appropriate place to kind of move the building up the slope a little bit, so it's got more of a presence on Penfield Road. Let's see. I will say that this design may adjust slightly. In addition to the light shades, some minor facade changes may change, but for the most part, the exterior, we feel, is, is really starting to settle into what the doctors really want to work with. Let's see. Ed covered the parking, which is just something I'd like to touch on briefly. In the doctor's own analysis, having worked in this town for, how many years, Dr. Verone?
Eighteen, fifteen, and Dr. Peters, eight.
Yeah, so 15 years. Their analysis is that with 20 parking spaces, that will accommodate a double of their current patient load. If parking becomes an issue past that, they feel that they can extend their hours, if necessary, to kind of spread people out, and also, there's a park-and-ride lot in the Wegmans across the way, that they can pick up employees and bring them into work and save spaces that way. So, we've really taken a close look at the parking issues, and the doctors definitely are not interested in constructing a building that has parking issues or will have foreseeable parking issues. And so, that's been a very big concern of ours and a, and a, a strong topic of conversation. Just going around to the back, I just wanted to point out this feature. This is a mural that we're using to kind of indicate the type of building it is. I know that the Town of Penfield zoning department has declared this a sign, and I would like to contend that, that distinction, because it really doesn't point out the brand of the business, just the type of the business. And we're looking at it more as a graphic or a mural. It could be a picture, and so, we would like, if possible, for you to weigh in on that for the, the zoning board, because I just think it adds interest to the, to the rear elevation, and, and it's a little articulation where I think it's, it's needed on the building. Now, let's see, we've also prepared an animation that takes you into the interior. Now, this is, I would really like to emphasize, a draft version of the interior, but just to kind of help you get a feeling for what the space is going to be like, we wanted to produce this as well. So there's the sun shade, you can see through the windows. That spiral stair kind of becomes the counter and the guardrail on the second floor. And this is kind of a great hall, we're looking at it as, where optometrists will sit at those tables and, and help people adjust and select their glasses, the children's area, and then the final view is looking down the exam corridor into the, into the patient exam rooms. So, did you want to say anything? Do you guys?
I think we've covered everything. If they have questions that Dr. Peters and I can help answer, I think maybe we could jump in there.
Okay. I think that ends the, I guess, our part of the presentation, so we'd like to open it up for questions, if you have any.
Okay. Bill, you want to get started with this?
Yeah. What's the total number of variances you're going to request? You've got signage, you've got setbacks, you've got parking numbers and parking lot, and then the stall size?
Yes. We've got two setback variances. The one to the east is our choice, the one to the front is because of the rear access. So we've got one that we've asked for kind of capriciously, but I think it's, it's good site design to ask for that setback. The parking dimensions, we've asked to go from 10 by 20 to 9 by 18, which is a fairly standard parking dimension, and I believe it's been done fairly frequently in the town, and is used regularly in, in the city of Rochester. The number of spaces we're asking for a variance for, again, that's very close to being in line with what the Monroe County study asks for, which I believe is a, is a resource that's been used before in the town to kind of gauge reasonableness of parking. And then signage is the last one, and again, we were asking for the signage because of the rear access setback. So really, the parking spaces and the east setback are the ones that, well, I guess the east setback is not created by the rear access road, but the parking kind of is, because the rear access road is taking up a place that could be parking. So, I think that, that east setback is the only one that I feel is, one that we're asking for that doesn't resolve from that setback, or the rear access easement.
Okay. Where would you propose to put your snow storage in the wintertime?
Snow storage, we're proposing to go across the road to the north of the lot.
And who owns that land?
It's the Town of Penfield. Yes. And in, in our meetings with the staff, and Mark, please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's, it was seen as an acceptable solution.
Okay. That's all I have.
Brad, when are you scheduled for the zoning board?
Next week. Yeah, a week from today.
I don't have any questions. I thought that fly-through was very educational, very well-done.
Thank you.
Like I said, I think it's the first time that we've seen that in a public hearing setting, and, nice job.
Thank you. Got a great staff, and if it helps answers questions, that's the main thing.
Yeah. Are there any questions from the, from the audience? Anybody like to, ma'am, if you could come up and introduce yourself with your name and address for the record? We would love to hear what you have to say.
I hope so. And I hope it's, you know, you're in favor of them. I moved here almost 17 years ago, and I think my first week, I went into eyesight.
What's your name?
Oh, you don't know me by now? No. Monica Guallick at South Village Trail. And, I come from a family of professionals, so I know how I'm supposed to be treated when I go to a medical office or anywhere. And I can't tell you the care that was given to me. And, I've been there since, and I go, now Dr. Verone's my doctor, used to be Dr. Hankin. Dr. Verone was my husband's doctor, well, most of the time. I do feel, you use my words, 21st century, and it's about time that Penfield got into that. When I moved here, the relocators said there's three Ps that are the upper echelon of Rochester. Penfield, Pittsford, and Perrington. Well, Penfield started not staying up there, in my view, you know? And I think having a building like this would add a eye appeal, would bring, like you said, to the 21st century, Penfield will be here. They do need, they did outgrow the space that they're at now, they do need the space. The building is gorgeous. I love the idea of this mural. I think that would be everybody's envy, and set us apart from the other two Ps. Of course, I'm not looking at my notes, I have so many other things I wrote down here. But all in all, I do hope that you will be in favor of their proposal. That's, I don't see any issues, as a person that pays taxes here. I think it would be, my taxes would be used, well, you know, whatever you have to do with it, whatever you all are doing. Give it to them. I'm not good at this, my husband is so much better at talking. I just have passion and...
You're doing just fine.
I wouldn't go anywhere else, and I know, I got to tell you something, I have sent more people here that have left, let's say, the, the Pittsburgh eye care area, have come here to eyesight, because of my recommendation, and if they see something like this, more people will be coming here, so, I think I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm not going to screw anything up.
Are there any other, are there any other comments? Anyone else like to speak to this application? Okay. Any other comments from the board? Do you have any final statements? If not...
I just want to thank everybody for looking over our project. Dr. Peters and I are really excited about it, and we just think it's going to be, you know, a really special space for 441 and for Penfield. And just to add from what Monica said, I, we already draw outside of Penfield, yes, our primary patient base is Penfield, but if you're familiar with the geography, you know, Fairport's right there, Walworth's right there, and Webster's right there, because Penfield gets skinny on the east side, so it's close to those other suburbs. I think this will be another way for us to draw into the town, and we're excited about it, and we hope you guys get behind it, too.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll call this part of the hearing closed. Rob, do you need a couple minutes to take down, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll take down quickly, that's fine.
Okay. Mark, do you want to start reading the second application? And, sir, if you want to bring up your stuff?
Second application, the Murray Law Firm, PLLC, 10 Maxwell Drive, Clifton Park, New York, 12065. On behalf of Rochester Gas and Electric, requests under Articles 9-9-2 and 11-11-7 of the code, preliminary and final site plan, and special permit, approval for a 15-foot tower extension upon an existing 180-foot lattice structure, self-supporting communication tower with associated improvements, on 19.4 acres at 1270 Plank Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Rochester Gas and Electric, and is zoned RA2. Application number 14P-0018, SBL number 095.03-1-33.
I'm not totally confident these are going to stay up here.
Well, it'll provide some excitement.
I think everybody should have a set of plans for themselves at this point. In any event, my name is Josh Silver, I'm attorney for, from the Murray Law Firm, I represent NISEG, and we're here with respect to their application to extend the height of their communications tower located at their Plank Avenue, or, excuse me, Plank Road service center. So, the, the application's very straightforward, we're not disturbing any earth, the tower is already there, all, all they do is extend the tower by more or less bolting on a prefabricated, prefabricated extension. They go up with a crane, it can be done in as little as a day. What, but what that allows them to do is move their antennas up. The reason why this is important is because NISEG relies on the service center to, as, as part of its network of communication systems to control its, its grid. The technology that's going in these antennas on this tower, on these towers, which we call smart grid technology, and relies, the microwave antennas specifically rely on line-of-sight communications to communicate from this substation to adjacent substations. Specifically, one of these, this microwave antenna at the very top will be pointed towards a service center in SOTUS, and, and the SOTUS substation in turn is connected with other substations, and that allows NISEG to have a handle on their, on their network. In addition, they're upgrading their other antennas on, on the, on the facility to include Y, what are called YMAX antennas. These are antennas that allow them to control the, their distribution of power, just on, on their communication lines themselves. In the event there is an outage, the communication, the telephone tower that's carrying the electricity has YMAX capability on it, it will relay that to these antennas, it'll upload it to the microwave antennas, everybody in the network will be able to know what happened, they'll be able to respond quicker. They don't have to rely on visual inspections to repair lines. So, all, what all this means is that we have more reliable energy. When it goes down, it comes back quicker. Really, in terms of the construction, like I said, there's not much to it, we're just going up 15 feet. The tower's already there, there's actually, I, I think as I speak, there may be two towers on this site. We recently replaced, or are in the process of replacing an existing tower with this tower. Once we have this up and running and all the antennas moved over, moved over to it, the old tower is going to be dismantled and removed entirely from the site. So, that's it. If, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Roseanne, would you like to?
Sure. What's the overall height of the new structure?
It's 180 feet right now. It's 180 feet right now, it's going up to 195 feet. It's a 15-foot extension.
And is there any current fencing around the structure right now?
There is. The...
There might be a cordless microphone if you need to point to the map.
You see, the, the fencing just, more or less, just goes around where the, where the tower is.
Is that all metal fencing?
Yeah, it's chain link fencing, yes.
And how high is the fence around it?
I believe it's 10 feet.
And that's all in good condition, doesn't need any repair at this time?
This is going to be new fencing, because the, the old tower's right here, and when they dismantle it, this is all new, so...
So all the old fencing will come out?
Yeah, the old fencing will come out, and they'll put new fencing in right around the new tower.
So you said the top of that tower is bolted on?
Yes.
So if that were to ever come off or to fall, is there anything within that distance, around that area?
No. We're, we have a clear zone equal to, greater than the total height of the tower, and that's standard when you're building communications towers, to have a fall zone around it. From a practical perspective, it's, they're built very strong, just because it's bolted on doesn't make it less strong than the remaining tower. We have a structural engineering report, which we included in our application to that effect as well.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Anyone else on the board?
I had a question. Is there a backup power source that is...
Usually, there's a generator that, that kicks on. I'd have to look through the plans on this specific site.
Is there anything new, though, as far as a backup power source, other than what's existing right now?
No, no. The, the application, well, this, this application is just to extend the existing tower.
One, a question about some of the landscaping out there. A while back, and I mean, a few years ago, some, RG&E planted some trees to screen that whole facility in the back there. Are those still there? Is it in good condition, or is there a way to maybe add to that? It seems to me there's some of those missing, or...
Yeah, you know, I haven't been out there, so I couldn't tell you what conditions are in right now, but certainly if the board wanted to require certain changes to the screening as a condition to the permit, they, NISEG would be happy to comply.
That, that's kind of where I was getting at, if some of them, some of those died, that might be a good opportunity to...
Sure. Yeah, they would, they would be happy to.
Any other comments from the board? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this project? Or this application? No? Okay. Thank you very much. Nice job.
That's a tough act to follow.
You didn't have a virtual reality flyover of the...
Next time, everybody gets a virtual reality helmet.
Okay. With that, we'll call this hearing closed and adjourn to the back of the auditorium. Thank you for coming.